We're currently recording.
Great.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Murphy can't make it tonight. He had a death in the family sadly. It's ninety-six-year-old Aunt Marie passed away and needs to be with family. So you'll have me chairing this meeting, the first meeting I've chaired since I was class president in nineteen sixty-nine. So bear with me. This is a budget hearing and we will for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and we'll turn it over to Village Manager Jerry Barburo.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Young. Let me try to pull up a slide. I want to pull up a slide to start the presentation. One second. Okay, I'll share my screen now. Let's go to slideshow beginning. Second.
Hey, we have to open the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertain a motion to open the meeting, please.
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the other night we looked at the tentative budget presentation mostly developed by Mr. Sonoff. And of course Laura Augie and myself, but Mr. Sonoff did the bulk of the work on it. And that's why I wanted him to present the tentative budget PowerPoint. Our budget this year, the tentative budget is forty-one million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, of which the thirteen million, four, four fifty-five, three eighty-eight is revenue other than a property tax. We plan on using what we've used for the last maybe decade or more, six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance to offset the taxes and lower the, lower the impact on the, on the residents of the community, property, property taxpayers. And our property tax levy is twenty-seven million, two sixty-five, nine oh two. The purpose of this meeting is to field questions from the Board of Trustees and come back either this evening with an answer or in subsequent evenings, subsequent work sessions to answer their questions, anything that they want to prioritize. There is some room in the budget to add more to this budget since we are approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars below the tax cap. So if there are priorities that the Board of Trustees, and this is really now in the Board of Trustees' hands, we've created the tentative budget. We know that it's a responsible, well-executed tentative budget, well-presented budget. The, the tax rate is actually going down in this budget. We are raising taxes over the, the year from last year from our budget, we're raising our budget one point zero five percent. But it is important that these next five or six meetings are are informational and effective from the Board of Trustees to the staff to be able to make sure that the budget is the Board's budget because the Board will now have to vote on and adopt this budget. And so what we're here tonight is to talk about revenue or any issues or concerns with revenue, expenses, issues or concerns with expenses as well as working on the capital budget. And the capital budget, in our case, unlike many, many other communities, is extensive. It is very well detailed. It is reviewed annually by our department heads, which have joined us. And it is really the plan potentially presented as a five-year plan, but it's probably more of a ten-year plan because of the cost and some of the cost of these items. But I keep looking over to my left because that's where my capital budget plan sits all the time. So we can start Deputy Mayor Young any way you want, but maybe we start with any questions or any issues or concerns regarding revenue so that we can either discuss that or come back to the Board with an answer if we can't answer that question.
Do any of the trustees have questions regarding revenues?
Thank you.
This is Dan. I'm sorry.
Can I suggest we put on the revenues on the screen? I think it's page twenty-two, twenty-five, phone works and, and go over them broadly and then we can have a focus discussion.
You want to go line by line? Sure, we could do that. Yeah.
Group by group, line by line, as has ever, as you know, some, some, you don't have to go line by line unless it becomes specific. It could be group by group. I think it's just to organize the conversation.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
But I think somebody else wanted to speak. I just got ahead.
Dan, if you want to say something? I think Dan wanted to talk also.
I, I think Victor's point is very well done. I was going to ask for a, going through the the thirteen million plus, how that, how the breakdown is and how that compares with last year's breakdown. What went up, what went down, et cetera.
You're talking about the items not raised by property taxes?
Yes.
We couldn't answer that tonight, but we want to answer that for you in detail. But we wouldn't, we didn't, we didn't have, at least I didn't have, that I can recall, advanced request of that, but we could certainly do that in a different meeting.
That's, that's fine. It's part of revenue, but that's, that's fine, Joey.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can certainly do that and, and show you the main items that, of course, Dan, a lot of items stayed the same, but you know, we can show you which items went up and which items went down. We could do that. We just need a little time to do that.
Just as a matter of curiosity, it's thirteen plus this year in the proposed budget. What was it last year?
I'd have to look. We'd have to.
Eleven million, nine twenty-six sixty.
There you go.
This is breakout of the increases and decreases in the revenues on page two twenty-seven of the budget document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one point on that, to the extent we can advance or identify some of the issues that relate to that percentage, the thirteen percentage that are, we hit on them today, then, then if you can pinpoint those would be very beneficial. And then if we can then finish the conversation on revenues, beginning of the first meeting next week, that would be, then we can wrap up revenues. That would be great.
Okay, so I have the page up. I'll share it with Victor. I'll share it now.
Yeah. Also, you know, Jerry, there's also a very cursory review of some of these revenue adjustments in the presentation from Monday evening.
Yep. Let me, let me share my screen now. And it's this one. Augie, you talking about this?
Yes, keep scrolling down. There you go.
Here we are.
So on the, Jerry, you going to take them through this or am I?
You, you, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna be your AV guy.
So in the further right column, you have your two thousand twenty-three tentative stage budget. And in your third column, from the left to the right, that was last year's adopted column. So if you compare those two columns, you can see that interest, other tax items, we had a decrease of eighteen thousand, eighteen percent. And that was attributed to the fact that the interest and penalties that we're budgeting is less than what we anticipated in the previous year. Going down, the next tax item is the non-property tax items, which include hotel tax, which we kept flat, sales tax distribution. We are currently in the full year of the one percent increase that they gave us. So we're projecting four point four million on that versus last year that was three point six million. Utilities gross receipt, we have a slight decrease in that of point oh eighty-five percent, which gives us an overall increase of eighteen percent in this line item. The next line item that we're going to look at is departmental income. Departmental income, we're showing a decrease of forty-five percent. That's attributed to building department miscellaneous fees. Total decrease of forty-eight percent and forty-eight percent, point twenty-four. We feel that this is the amount of fees that are been decreased by this amount based on the current trend. So far during the actual year, we're going to take it seven thousand and one sixty-five. The run rate at this point will project out to twenty-five thousand.
Right. That's why that went down over forty-eight percent. Next page.
Yes, the next page is public safety. Public safety has a hundred and nine percent increase.
And that's attributed to the police detail.
Correct. And there's both sides of this. One is the revenue side and one is the expense side. Our village manager was very lucky to appropriate more work for the special detail, requiring utility companies to use PB in major intersections. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry.
No, it's correct. A lot of the work is being done on major intersections and, and busy roads, not on side streets or dead ends. And so we felt it was safer for the community to, to make them use our police detail because we know that the police department will do a better job than a, than a typical flag person at that location. So we did it for public safety, for, for public safety reasons.
And I'm glad you did it for public safety reasons. It brought in a hundred forty-three percent more revenue.
Right, right.
Health stayed flat. The next major line item is transportation. And overall, transportation went. I had to use my budget supplies. Can't see that far.
So, so we, we increased railroad, the, the tentative increase in railroad resident commuter parking permits is six point three percent. Non-resident is seventeen point seven percent in this page, on this page.
Correct. The overall increase in this is four point five six in transportation.
Correct. With all these other items, basically all parking permits and things of that nature. We did anticipate parking spot dining to bring in approximately twenty thousand dollars this year. So I understand that we already have requests. I understand that the chamber is looking for the village to give them some kind of a discount like we did last year. And I'm willing to work with them provided that we hit our number. That's really all I care about. Definitely an increase in seasonal parking permits. We're increasing that by, by almost double and ninety-two percent. But we did, we did reduce daily parking by twenty percent. So as Augie had explained, this is four point five six percent in the transportation line increase. Next item, Mark.
Culture and recreation, we have an overall. The culture recreation, we have an overall, looks like it's staying flat on culture and rep. And specific line items are listed below. So you want me to go through each line item? Or does anybody have any specific questions?
Yeah, we're at four point three four percent as an increase for culture and recreation. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we're working our way out of the pandemic. But if there's any individual line that may be in question or they have concerns over our projections, of course, we can, you know, we can talk about that at all. We have increased the MEC and we have our naturalist here. We have increased revenue and MEC significantly because we're going to have more programs and do, do more as far as revenue enhancements in that, in that area. As long as Kyle doesn't get lost on the kayaks, we're going to continue to have kayak tours. We have a lot of other areas that are either zeroed out or flat, I should say. Or we have some, you know, some, some significant decreases and increases. Really all over, all over the place when it comes to that because we took every line, we looked at every line, and we talked about every line individually.
One of the things, Jerry, the, the Board already approved, they approved the recreation fees and charges and harbor fees.
Correct.
I think it was either at the end of last year or early this year. So we did have a cursory review of, of those fees with the Board.
On page two thirty-two, home community services stayed flat, zero percent increase. The current fees taken in, the run rates are projected, now we're going to take in the same as prior year. Intergovernmental charges, there's an increase of thirty-six percent, thirty-six point ninety-two percent. New York State contract for eleven point nine miles of lane, we're projected to receive twenty-one thousand, six thirty. County Westchester, point thirteen miles at four thousand nineteen per mile. We're projecting to receive ten thousand. Transportation prisoners, we're looking to increase from ten thousand to twelve thousand. And the big item is stop DWI. Last year we projected a thousand, this year we're projecting seven thousand. Run over increase of thirty-six point ninety-two percent.
And as everyone, just one second, on the DWIs, everyone has seen, we're, we're starting to receive awards. And thank you Chief DeRosa and the Police Department, but we're starting to receive awards from entities, from other entities or people that would recognize how much and how well we do regarding the DW, the stop DWI initiatives.
Property has an overall increase of one point nine six percent. And we'll run down the items on there, on your somebody at property. Interest has remained flat. We project no increase for the subsequent year. Sports times three is as per contract, it's remaining flat. Wireless flag pole rental, we're projecting a ten percent increase in that. Fish and bait shop, a four point four percent increase. Easement on drill six Fayette is a twenty percent increase. American Towers, we're projecting a point ninety-one percent decrease. And Keeps Pavilion rental has slightly gone up from twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. There's a ten percent increase on that. Any questions or concern? License and permits. Overall increase is one point eight seven percent. Most of the lines have remains flat. License others has gone up by seventy-nine point ninety-one percent. Particularly the increases attributed to the activity in the current year, what we're taking in. So we projected what the run rate would be until the end of the year to give it a seventy-nine percent. Street opening permits is thirteen percent increase from seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand. And electrical permits went ten percent increase from fifty thousand to fifty-five thousand. Questions, concerns, comments?
Okay, next category.
Fines and forfeitures is an overall decrease of nine point four four percent. The court fees have shown a trend of decreasing. Last year we budgeted eight eighty-four. This year coming up, we're projecting eight hundred thousand. Also loan charges, we stayed flat with those items. Overall, that was the, it's mostly fines and forfeitures that show a decrease. Questions, concerns? Next item?
Next item.
I, actually, I had one. For fines and, and forfeitures, if we're only at four hundred and two, it's the top of the page, we're only at four hundred and two, nine twenty-nine now, how are we going to get up to eight in two months?
One of the issues, there's a several month lag on court revenues because we have to report the money to the state, then the state sends us back the money and then we deposit it. And that, there's a, it's about a two to three month lag time on that.
There is. If I can wrap it up, Dan, the trustee Lucas, the eight hundred thousand is for next year's budget. From June to May.
Right.
Four hundred now, the previous year's budget anticipated we'd finish the year at eight eighty-four. We're not going to reach the eighty-four.
Right.
It's the decrease from eight hundred eighty-four to eight hundred thousand. It's a nine point five percent decrease.
So you think we'll get up to eight hundred thousand and if we don't, we can revisit?
I believe we're getting up to eight hundred thousand because we're pretty much past this pandemic.
Yeah.
And more people are going to come out to eat. And they're going to make illegal U-turns and they're not going to follow the law.
This is really parking stuff, right? This is really all parking stuff.
Yeah, the fines and forfeits, it's, it's composed of parking, traffic and code violations.
So, so when a, in a full pandemic year with closures and everything, they collected five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Obviously, you know, it's a lot less than the eight fourteen that they collected prior. But we know that the number will get closer, closer to what we normally would see, but we still decided to go to a, just, just under ten percent decrease, just to give ourselves some buffer.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sale of property and comp losses, there's an overall increase of nine point twenty-six percent. The recycling has gone up a hundred twenty-five percent from four thousand to nine thousand. Food scrap, a new item we added to the budget, we're projecting to come out to thirteen thousand annually. Sales equipment, it's a fifty percent increase, but the numbers are overall, they're kind of small. If you look at it, it's twenty thousand, thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars for an overall, overall increase of nine point two six percent. Miscellaneous, there's an overall increase of seventeen point thirty-four percent. What's included in miscellaneous is refund the prior year's expenditures, library bond payments, that those are based on amortization schedules for twenty-five years, so we pay every year, and our related aim payments, which are given to us from New York State. There, it's actually, the numbers issued by New York State, but it's actually money collected from Westchester County, right? And L M C T V, B L C distributions, we're projecting eighty thousand, seven fifty from the information we have. That's all on that line. And overall, there's an increase of seventeen point thirty-four for miscellaneous. Any questions concerned? Or can we move to the next item? State aid. State aid was showing an overall increase of five point eight two. Mortgage tax, we're projecting an increase of point twenty-two percent. The per capita that was in line was moved up to the O two hundred, as requested by New York State. Navigation enforcement stayed flat. Youth programs were anticipating an increase of a hundred twenty-five point twenty percent. And the bus shows the state flat. Overall, we had a projection of five point eight two in this line item.
Augie, talk about the CHIPS program number. That's the number that we get from the state. The three oh one.
Correct. And basically, we try to aggregate these amounts every year until we get enough money to do a big project. This year, we've been awarded three oh one, three hundred one thousand versus last year of two thirty-seven. The next item is federal aid. We have an overall increase of a hundred thirty-eight point ten percent. That is mostly trend. That is, that, I stand corrected, I'm sorry, zero percent of federally. Interfund transfers is a hundred thirty-eight point ten percent. We're transferring four hundred thousand from debt service fund and a hundred from water fund to help pay the expenditures in each respective fund. So that gives you an overall budget of thirteen million, four fifty-five, three hundred eighty-eight thousand.
An increase of twelve point eight seven percent in our revenue projections.
So the, the big items are the sales tax and the park.
Those, those are, there's some, yeah, there's some others, but you're right. Those are the big items. And the parking, Dan, the parking, we had a, we had a, a lower number and we started, we continued to follow the numbers. As you may remember, I had Chief Simpson reporting to us this time last year, the numbers that were in the lot. And now I'm, I'm counting cars on my way to work most days and the increase is significant. Plus also, we know that Metro North has added a significant number of trains to the line. So we're, we're, we added a little bit more money to that while we were working on the tentative budget. That's our rationale for the parking, especially the, the railroad parking.
Understand, and I understand the rationales. I'm a little concerned that we may not hit that.
Yeah.
And we, we, we might want to be a little bit more conservative on that. Again, I'm hoping that COVID is will continue to decrease.
Yeah.
The, the new variant is now getting a lot more, is on a worldwide basis. Is the dumb, is now the dominant variant in the United States and who the hell knows what's going to happen.
So, so this budget has a little bit of room unless the Board decides to bring in new initiatives, new expenses on the expense side. This budget has a little bit of room to shave some of those numbers and make your, make your, make your budget more comfortable for you. You're still, you know, you're still significantly under the cap, not, you know, not, not millions, but several hundred thousand under the cap. So that's a big benefit to us. We could go to any other area that you want, whatever the trustees want to do. We can go to expenses. If you want to run that down, that's pretty extensive, but our department heads are here to, to, to explain anything that, that they may, that we have questions for them or we can go into capital, whatever you want to do.
I just have a comment on overall on revenues. We just, just to see. I also, without going detail by deep line by line, I also think it may be appropriate to, to be a bit more conservative on sales tax and parking. Each, 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 once then you put the pieces together again, but just, just to give the critical, I, you know, just jumping to a thirteen percent increase, thirteen point five million is huge. It was around ten when I, when I started looking at this and I'm glad it's going up. But, but I, I, I also think we, you know, in order to do that, it's better, you need to compare and have a more, more detailed discussion on sales tax, which is not, it will detract. So I, I'll reserve on, on that and, and look at other figures. But, but on the optimistic side, it sounds good, but if we want to be more conservative, it would need to be shaved. But in order to do that, we'll need to compare and have some figures. So that's, that, that's, that's my restoration on, on overall.
I know, yeah. So, so I know, I know Mr. Sonoff will volunteer to take a look at what the other, what the other communities have projected as far as percent increase in sales tax. And we can have a little bit of a discussion. Communities are size, our budget size, you know, maybe a little bit closer to our makeup. We can kind of figure out what they're thinking and we can have that discussion, you know, next week when we have most of our meetings, if that's okay.
If I may add, Jerry?
Yeah.
Next week when we, when we discuss this stuff.
Yeah.
I just want to add, so far, our number is based on, we've collected two payments thus far and we bought in two point three million. We have two more payments coming in. Our payments are coming in a little over a million each payment. So that's how we came up with the four point four million. But then we'll do the research and see how. So that's how we came up with the four point four million, but then we'll do the research and see how all the communities are coming in.
Sorry, sorry, Victor.
We're gonna say it's overall, you know, there was a lot of optimism earlier in the year, but now that you see some, some revisions of, 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 of numbers. Companies, governments, so, so just, just to be in line with how people are having a second look because it's, it's as we were rushing into getting very optimistic, we, we have, we have some doom scenario, but not doom scenarios, but some interesting scenarios to consider as well. So that's my, that's all.
Okay.
I think we're three hundred eleven thousand dollars below the cap right now.
Three eleven, I thought it was two fifty, so it's three eleven, you're right, because I saw it on your slide the other day, I should have remembered.
Again, the point is revenues are revenues, the cap and the overall picture is another, you know.
So, so we know, so as we do individual, if I could ask, as we do individual budget um, meetings next week with our department heads, we're definitely going to focus on their expenses. So maybe we reserve the expense conversations, budget by budget or department by department, and try to spend the other hour and a half that we have left uh on capital, if we want to talk about capital. Um, and maybe go do a deep dive into capital or a, a quick overview, whatever you want me to do. But I know we're gonna, if we do, if we do line by line expenses tonight, we're also going to do them next week when we have our budget meetings. So um, it's up to you, but if we want to go into capital, you know, we could really dive into that.
Okay, Jerry, for, just as one person, I much prefer to go to, when we talk about different items, to go to the more significant items a- as opposed to line by line. I think it's, it's, it's much more productive from a, you know, policy vantage point. Uh, because the rest of it, you know, one way or another, by the time you get done, it'll be significant.
Sure. So, so what we can do in preparation of next week's meetings, and, and that's a good hint, um, is that we can take the individual department budgets that we're going to review that evening and highlight the lines that have either increased significantly or decreased significantly, you know, below, over ten percent or, 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 you know, um, um, negative ten percent. If that works, we could, we could certainly help with that and move the discussion along. That would be fine with us. We could do that work.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be more beneficial to.
Okay.
Because we have, we have limited time in these meetings.
Yeah, we always do, you're right. So it's ten plus or ten minus, and we'll highlight those lines and discuss those lines if, if needed in detail.
So Lou, if we're moving to the capital budget, I have a couple of things that, uh, for perspective, I'd like to go over before we dive into the nitty gritty.
Are we, are we ready to do that?
Uh, that's what I'm asking you, you're running the meeting, so I'm good.
Oh, well, okay, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm more of a following than running, but um, yes, let's move on to the capital budget.
Okay, I can put up, I have the capital on my screen if you wanted, or if you want to just talk, talk in general terms, whatever you want to do, just let me know.
Uh, I have a couple of things that I'd like to try and do for perspective, um, from a board's perspective. Uh, the budget committee head recommended, um, starting two years ago uh, to have a target of seven and a half percent for the uh, um, for the uh debt service uh to the operating budget. Not, not as a cap, not as a something set in stone, but as a policy target. Um, so this would help us, you know, um, allow us to better handle what the amortizations will be, et cetera. It does not mean that we can't, you know, go over, doesn't mean that we can't go under it. It just means that uh we need to take, we should be taking a hard, a very hard look when we start moving ahead of that. Um, and we have significant capital expenditures, you know, when you tell, when you total everything up and we all have to pay for that. Um, so I would like to propose that um as a operating target.
It's a, it's a, so it's a policy you're talking to the other board members about. You don't necessarily have to get our input. We don't, we don't need to give it.
So clarify that for me, Dan?
I, I would like to make, maybe I'll put it in the form of a motion to, to clarify, okay? Uh, I, um, I'd like there's a operating policy that the village should maintain uh debt service at a, at seven point five percent of the operating budget.
And you, you chose that figure, why?
That, that, that figure comes from the budget committee who worked on it for well over a year. And their recommendation in two thousand twenty uh to the board, uh, got to the board and we never really adopted it one way or the other. Um, and what it is, is a guideline. That, that's my proposal.
That's, that's an overall guideline for, uh, for budgetary processes going forward, right?
It, it's for, it would include this one too. It doesn't mean that you can't go over it. Um, what it's saying is, let's take a hard look at what we're doing in relation to, you know, that percentage and see where we come out. And, you know, that does not preclude us from going higher, lower, or hitting it exactly.
I, I, I think, uh, I mean, I don't know about what anybody else thinks, but I, I think that'd be something appropriate to bring up for a work session and we can discuss it separately. I don't think we should. Um, if we were looking at this budget, we should probably just look at this budget, don't you think, Dan?
I'm sorry, Lou.
I mean, I mean, uh, I think we should just look at what, what's on, what's in front of us here as opposed to talking about uh, uh, a debt service limit uh, in this forum.
It's not a limit. Let me, let me be very clear that it is a target. So if we are over that, we take a harder look at it. It does not mean that we can't do anything. That, I'm, I'm being very careful with the words. That's why I've said this is a policy target.
All right, but I, I've got questions about individual items here. I think we should get to that.
No, no, I, I, I understand that, but it, I think we have to put all, when we, at the end of the day, we have to put this into perspective. And I think the budget committee's work on this was, uh, you know, significant. Um, you were not on the board then, but everybody else was on the board. Um, you know, um, and it's a question of trying to help guide us through the process. So that when we get through with all of everything, we take a look at it and say, okay, we, where do we stand in relation to that? What do we want to do? That's all.
It, it sounds reasonable. I think you should, uh, put it on a, a work session budget, we, a, a work session agenda, we should talk about it.
Well, I, I think, you know, the budgets, the, I, we got this about a year ago from the budget committee. I was looking at it today. I was looking for something else, but I found this memo, it was from last April. But, you know, I think it's principles about what we should be doing to be fiscally responsible. And I think that would be useful. I'm gonna, I will forward it to you, I can find it again. Um, I'll forward it to everybody. Um, and it's simply like a target. And I think if we wait, you know, if we put it on a work session, we won't discuss it till after the budget's been adopted. And I think it's a bad, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a we.
The next work session.
Yeah, but we won't get, we rarely get to the, the new items on our work session. To consider as we are thinking about the budget, how, you know, how much we can afford. I mean, Jerry said this in the beginning, our, our, we have a five-year capital plan, but financially, it's more like a ten-year capital plan because we, unless, you know, I mean, I made a joke about the village buying a lottery ticket, but do all of this.
Yeah.
So we have to figure out how much we're actually going to get done, what the priorities are, and it may not be the fun things. It may be the things that have to get done and how much we can afford to either bond or use from reserves. And so I think a target's really helpful.
All right, we have how many more of these sessions?
We have, well.
Several more, right?
We have.
This is the only session for the, for the capital po- budget.
Right.
I'm not comfortable.
And we, we put this on at the beginning to try and help get, get us feel of trying to where we want to be, you know, when we end up. Um, you know, anyway, I've made a motion if somebody wants a second, that's fine, if not, then.
I'm happy to second it. I think what, I mean, I'm, 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 I understand what, I understand what Lou is saying, but, um, it's not going to be helpful to staff if we decide to do this at the end of April. Would that be fair from staff's point, perspective?
Capital?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying if we decide that we're, that, that we're going to work for a target, it, you need to know that now.
We, we, um, we need to know if the board wants to create a policy, that's for sure. That's, that's definitely something we need to know. But, but Augie, if you could explain a little bit about our bonding capacity and what trustee Natchez is talking about, which is a, a three point one million dollar debt service included in our forty-one million dollar budget. What's our bonding capacity? Let's start from there.
Two hundred ninety-five million.
Right. And so our debt service today, I mean, we could look it up, but I'm sorry, I put the, the sheet away. Our debt service included in this budget is
The total bonds outstanding?
Uh huh. So the, our debt service and what we're making payments on this budget. That's what I think trustee Natchez is talking about.
Well, what we're making payments right now, this budget, the total interest and principal is four million thirty-seven.
Uh huh.
Seven percent on forty-one million is two point eight million.
Right, two point.
Already over the seven percent.
Correct.
But does that mean, I'm a little confused how that works.
So what we're maintaining now is higher than that debt limit. And we're still able to bring in a responsible budget. If you want to lower the amount of money that we bond uh, and keep it at the, the two and a half, the two A, three million dollar number, that's fine, but that's a policy. That's not something the staff would be involved in. Just like we have a policy of thirty percent um, of, um, of reven- of surplus to our budget, of uh fund balance to our budget. That's a policy the board created. So if it's a policy, we abide by it, whatever, whatever you want. But right now, we're easily maintaining, what was it, number, four point what?
Four point three seven.
Four point three million dollars. We're easily maintaining four point three million dollars in this budget of debt service. So it's not, uh, it's a significant reduction. If we keep it at four point three, as things come off, we add things on. I think that's what you're looking at. But right now, if you're looking at the policy that you're creating or that you're, that you're recommending, we would have to not purchase anything to get down to the seven point five percent debt service of, of budget. We'd have to pay off that million dollars first before we could buy anything.
That's, that's.
I, I, I think you're misunderstanding.
Okay.
Okay, because what I'm saying is, this is a policy as a target.
A target.
There are reasons to go over it. I don't have a problem if we are really understanding it and saying, yes, we should, you know, we need to do this, 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 and this and go over it. But it helps us, I think, helps, guides us in terms of our prioritization of making, uh, of, of really coming to grips with, you know, our priorities. That's all. And I don't have a problem of being higher, uh, but, um.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it, it, the way it's laid out is just way, way, way too low there. I mean, uh, uh, but we need to look at it. Uh, I, I, I don't think, so we can, we can talk about tonight.
What, what may be, what may be an example of this is the fact that we have um, a surplus or a fund balance now of about thirty-eight, almost forty percent, easily forty percent of our fund balance based on our, um, based on our budget. We have ten percent more in our fund balance than we, than we, than our policy states. If we're going to use some of that ten percent, that's going to help us offset the debt service because we can spend the money that we have, in essence, in the bank to, to purchase capital items. And then our debt service goes lower, of course, because we're not paying debt service on those items that we're paying quote unquote in cash. That can help us easily create this, you know, this, this happy medium uh through everything. But that's why maybe it may should, it may and should be a discussion item at a work session. We have three more work sessions next week. We can create one of those, one of those, you know, their work sessions. So we just add it to that work session as, as a, uh, as an agenda item. And, and the board would discuss it.
And the budget committee wants to come in and, and, and give us their reasoning, that, that, that would be, that would be, uh, helpful. What you've laid out here, it just seems like we've been putting on a straitjacket. I, I don't understand it.
I think that we should be discussing it before we finalize the budget. But I also think, you know, a- as I think about what's happened in the last six months, you know, we have a lot of expenses. I mean, it's great that we have, it's great that our, our, it's great that we have a, a cushion in our reserve. That's, that's great. And, um, and we have a policy that sort of helps guide us with what we do with that. Um, we also have huge expenses and deferred maintenance on buildings. You know, maybe that's, that might be, you know, when, when, you know, the controller's office is always suggesting if you've got a really healthy reserve fund, that you may want to restrict it for, restrict parts of it for building improvements or building repairs. And I think, I think that's where we are. We know we can't accomplish our five-year capital plan in five years without going into tremendous debt. We have a cushion because we, I mean, because we've been fiscally responsible and we've, you know, managed. And we've, and we've created this policy two years ago, the reserve. So maybe now is the time to discuss how else we to marshal our resources, figure out what we can do and what we can't do.
When we create those reserves, my only concern about the creating the reserves and, and targeting um, those funds for certain areas is that once you create that, the controller has been clear to say that you can't revert it back to something else. And that's a little bit, you know, we're a little, it's a little scary for us because we may need that for something else. But, you know, so, so that's, that's a little bit of a concern with that policy. Um, it shouldn't be like that. It shouldn't be like that, but.
I guess I'm not saying we necessarily do that, but we can, if, if, you know, if we've got a, if we've got a cushion in that thirty percent reserve fund, we can, without creating a different fund, use some of it as if we had a different fund to make sure we're doing what we need to do with the buildings that are, because we can't keep, we can't.
If, if, if you can look at it that way, I a hundred percent agree, and I know that, that the rest of the staff would too. But I agree with that. Because we, we can look at it that way, that, without, but without handcuffing ourselves to, to that, um, to that regulation the controller has.
I, I, I agree. I don't think it, um, nor is suggesting a legal reserve.
Yeah.
As opposed to a, you know, a content preserve, if you will.
Yeah, a, 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 you know, a, um, a, a more dedicated, uh, use of the funding. I get it. We're smart enough to be able to set aside what we need to set aside to take care of certain things without creating the, the reserve fund that, uh, that would, that would hurt us in, in the long run, in the long run.
Well.
What else, what else, um, we can, Dan, what we'll do is we'll add the seven point five for discussion at one of the other meetings. Um, towards the end of one of the other meetings, after the department head has been, uh, has been allowed to explain their, 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 um, uh, budget and then, you know, dismissed. We could certainly do that. I mean, we could do it at the first meeting, we could do it at the second meeting, whatever you want.
And, and I'd, I'd love to hear from the budget committee to find out what their reasoning was, I mean.
Okay, well then, what we need, if you want to do that, I don't have a problem after, but we need to set something specific for, uh, you can't. I don't want to have a department head hanging on for endless at times, and I don't want the budget committee to be hanging, hanging on. So we need to, you know, try and, try and schedule it.
Well, we'll schedule it at one of the evenings that only have two departments. And we'll take the department head, uh, matters first, let them go home, because they're already home probably. And we'll, we'll, you know, um, bring the budget, the budget committee will have to be, will have to hang around though, because they'll have to be at the meeting, so.
Well. Go ahead, Dan, finish.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Victor.
Well, as I say, this discussion has been kind of in hanging for la- it was last year, probably, it started probably the few year before. I, I think what would be very productive is how to frame it in such a way that it becomes a ve- a useful document for the analysis that happens concurrent with the budget. And, and, and after that, not just an academic, or is this good or bad, or is it too low or too high? Because we've been there, right? Actually, uh, what is exactly the, the percentage now? I, I know it's two ninety-five total, four point three, so that, what, what's, what's exactly the number you said, Augie?
Seven point five.
No, but. Four point three million, Aug. I mean, uh, Victor, four point three is what Augie said, million.
Yeah, so, so that percentages.
Ten percent. Around ten percent. It's around ten percent.
Around ten percent. So what is a? So what is a practical and how would this become a practical analysis? Both for staff and 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 from the perspective of the board that Mr. Mr. Nachches has articulated based on the budget committee's recommendation? How could this be framed in a way that, okay, between, it it is justified to go from seven to ten be under this or that or here, you know, explain that. And in this current cycle, this is what we could happen based on where we are and have kind of a productive, you know, elements of the outcome, you know, product of of all this. So that that's my suggestion. I'm not, I'm not against, but I but I, all the contrary, I'm in favor. But but I also think, you know, we've been, actually, this has been discussed probably in two two cup, last couple of years, not just in the last cycle.
I think what you're talking about, Victor, is a is a budget guidance document that has some some percentages, just like we have a document or a resolution that um requires us to keep thirty percent uh surplus in our uh, in our fund balance, something along those lines.
Right, and if you go higher and.
Yeah, if you go higher, then you have to use surplus if you get, or or you have to cut or something developed. That's what you're talking about.
I'm sure there's something about that. When when the this board developed that policy, we looked at many and then wrapped it up in what was more, was more useful.
Question, where did that thirty percent surplus figure come from? Is that the uh standard or?
Controller guidance, really guidance from the controller's office.
The controller, other municipal.
Thirty percent, that sounds high. Wow. All right, uh, so what do we want to do now? We want, we want to get into the the individual items or or are we going to continue to talk about the percentages? I think uh I think we need to wait before we have more information on the percentages. Yes?
Well, we have a motion, so I'm happy to defer. Just, I'm happy to defer the motion to uh a a meeting, but I don't want it at the end of the budget cycle. So it has to be within the next two, two meeting. We only have five meetings. This is one.
So uh, you you if you're going to withdraw it and make it again?
No, I'm not withdrawing it. I'm just, we, I'm willing to have it adjourned.
So you're gonna let let me, the the motion is uh sitting there on a on second. We're not voting on it now. Is that how that works?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting. I'm happy to do that.
Wanted at the first budget meeting, which is the the April fifth budget meeting, or is it the fifth or the sixth?
Fourth.
Wait a minute, hold on. Oh, yeah, we are, we're Monday. You want to put it on for Monday? We'll put it on for Monday.
Okay, that's fine.
Put it on for Monday.
And what is it, what is the motion again? Do do we have a a somebody can read it back? I I don't remember quite the way it was phrased.
The the motion was that the village should uh maintain, maintain a target debt service at seven point five percent of the operating budget. I E.
Okay, got it.
Okay, the word is target.
Target.
Armament.
All right, great. We'll 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 look at that on uh April fourth.
Okay, uh, wi- with that, if if I may, I'll lose with that. Uh, Jerry had come up with um amending the budget committee's recommendations for prioritizing the capital expenses. And when I went through the uh capital expenses, it doesn't quite follow that. Uh, some are, some aren't. I think we need to, you know, that would be helpful if that if staff could rearrange uh the, I'm not suggesting re- recalculating stuff, but I'm saying reorganize in relation to the, you know, the five items that um, you know, were in the priority list.
Not sure what you're saying here.
The.
I mean, it's it's clear what they what their priorities are. They have them all all.
No, 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 no. I I it it's clear what the department heads are doing. I I have problems with that, and that's that's very, that's very helpful. But there is a uh, he it was a recommendation by the budget committee of how to prioritize things like um health and safety. Uh, you know, that which is required by court, you know, by court decree or um consent decree or items, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to jive necessarily with what we have in front of us. And I think in terms of helping us guide through th- this long list, that would be very helpful if this, if Jerry, you can re uh Jerry and Augie, if you can reorganize, not change yet any of the numbers there.
Yeah.
Put category one, category two, category three.
Well, I'll explain it. I'll explain it to Lou because he's new.
I I I haven't thought, though. One, one of uh, one of all the trustees, including the mayor, go through the list and come up with our own priorities and then we can compare them.
No, no, I'm in favor of that, but but we need to though, I I I realize you haven't been part of it, but for two years, we've been talking about how to prioritize uh our capital expenditures um for budgeting purposes. Uh, it was, it's very important to get the department heads input. It's very important to get uh the manager's office input. But it's also very important to try and take all of those and put them into the a category of, you know, things that we legally have to comply, things that are health and safety. Uh, I E., we've we created a model of how to, you know, of how to look at things. And that, that's something I think we should be doing.
You're talking about stuff we gotta do and stuff that's optional.
So, no, Lou, it's a an evaluation criteria. The controller and their guidance on how to develop a better capital plan provides a a spreadsheet where anyone, but I was the only one who actually did it, was to create an evaluate or or uh use an evaluation criteria to rate each project or each initiative or each piece of equipment based on um what I feel, what I felt at the moment was the scoring. Uh, and so we created a criteria scale. So when you see it on that column on the capital budget, it says V M. What does it say? V M criteria, whatever, whatever it says.
Project score.
Yeah, project score. So so what I did, what I did during my process with the capital budget is created a project score. Um, we can provide the spreadsheet to any one of uh staff and or but of board members to create their own budget score. But what I think Dan is asking is that I re- reexamine, relook at those budget scores and um make sure that, first of all, the priority hasn't changed in the last time I did it, but also to present it to the board in such a way where the highest scores are the items that need to or are imperative that we focus on first. And the lowest scores obviously are going to be the ones that, you know, we can, we can keep deferring year after year after year.
Well, that that was, that was my question when I first looked at this. At not, what number would this cut off uh for, let's say, this year? I I I mean, that's what I presumed it meant, right? I mean.
So so a a project in the four hundred number, that's that's a high priority project.
Yeah, that I get.
Right, okay, a project with eighty, right, is is less. So and I just want to, I'm thinking that's what Dan's saying, but I want him to respond so that I make sure that I'm I'm.
Yeah, what I'd like is, if you will, if, let's assume the four hundred numbers is 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 number one.
Yeah, okay.
All of those would be lumped together.
Okay, all the, all the big numbers lumped together.
Well, then the number two, you know, would be lumped together. Number three, lumped together. Number four, would I don't want you to change the scores or anything, or unless you feel you have to. But it's easier to look at, these are meant, you know, these are the most critical in terms of the overall, not in terms of how a department looks at something, in terms of anything else other than we have legal requirements to do. That.
It sounds like a cut and paste uh issue.
Yeah, that's all. That's all.
Right.
I mean, it's a spreadsheet. So right now, it's sorted by department. Jerry can sort it by V M project score, right? I mean, any.
We can.
And then it's it's basically just running, just sorting the data differently and printing it out that way, right?
It's like, we, we can read it by project score and and we can follow what the budget committee um had recommended, which was this, what's on the screen right now.
Okay, so what I, what I would like, Jerry, as you do that, as you, you know, hit magic keys on the Excel sheet to re, re, you know, reformat it.
Uh huh.
End of each of the categories to have a total.
Okay. The four hundred numbers.
Not a cumulative subtotal, a subtotal, a subtotal for each of the in a total at the bottom of everything.
That makes sense.
So create multiple, recreate multiple sheets on one page or one on one document so that you can see what the highest priority items are and what their total would be as far as dollar amount.
That's correct. That would be, that would be, that would be very helpful.
We can do that. I don't have to have Mr. Sonoff volunteer for that. I can do that myself.
You don't have to change anything unless you think there's something that, unless you.
I mean, it it it's. It's the same information, just grouped differently.
And I will, I will.
I don't have to volunteer, Joe, but I feel I may be volunteering.
No, you won't. You won't have to.
All right, uh, does anybody have any specific questions on 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 capital budget items?
Um, I can.
I have one.
Going with one, unless you have something, Lou, that you would like to delve into.
Sixty seven mandatory river maintenance after ACE project. I- is that capital expenditures or is that going to be future operating expenditures?
Yeah, we have.
I'm sorry, you you've you've lost me. Where are you?
I'll bring it up. I'll bring it up. I'll bring it up on the screen. Just give me a second. Keep.
Were you item sixty seven? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, sixty seven.
Okay.
Sixty seven's at the top of the screen, close to the top of the screen, right here. Right, so Augie has a a an explanation we like to use regarding what's capital and what's not, and Augie will provide that to you.
Okay. I mean, how is that capital?
So any type of reoccurring expense that's done every year, that is a operating expense. One shots or new projects that are done only in that individual year, those are capital items. Any item over twenty thousand, that is a new item uh to be done, and it's not annual, that's part of the capital. And the criteria, the threshold is twenty thousand.
All right.
So if you have every year, for example, you buy a so the example I wanted to use, I'm not going to use is police cars, because it's no longer the operating budget, but river maintenance is an annual budget that you do every year, and sanitation you do every year, so you keep it in the operating budget to show services.
Well, the thi- the thing I don't, I don't understand is, well, I I I don't understand. I mean, we're, we're gonna, I mean, we're, we're going to start cleaning the river soon anyway, before the the ACE project happens. Um, uh, so um, shouldn't we just, you know, figure that that's what we gotta do? That's our job? No?
What happens is, Lou, if you add three hundred and fifty thousand to the budget, right, taxes, you're 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 going up one point, one point whatever percent on on your um, um, on your increase. The three fifty in a capital, we could capitalize the three fifty. And then the following year, it would be a lower number. It could be a higher number. I'm not exactly sure, but we could capitalize that number in order to help us with our budget.
And and if we, if we, if we do work on the river between now and then, it may not even be three fifty when we get there, right?
It may not be, but I have a feeling that there might be a number that the Army Corps decides they want us to capitalize or that they want us to spend every year based on their projection of what kind of maintenance they expect us to do after their project, after the project is done.
Yeah, Jerry, it it's going to be a big number, and I I have to look at this on the backup on this, because it may also include equipment we may need to purchase to help us in our maintenance efforts.
Right.
And I, it's not, I mean, it's not just cleaning out the river. It, you know, at some point, it's maintaining the walls that have been built. Now, you know, that won't happen.
I get it, yeah.
This is restructuring walls. You're right.
Yeah.
Could be a lot of that.
It's a lot of that. That's the problem. I mean, that is a a a conundrum in Massachusetts right now.
Mm hmm.
All right, I I keep telling people it's going to be like getting a uh a double knee replacement.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you only need to do that once. You don't need to do any main maintenance on your knees.
Well, I I, well, I I got a horror story I could tell you about, Fred.
What's the next item?
If we could go to number fifty fifty eight?
Fifty eight, top of the list, gangway replacement?
Yeah, that's six hundred thousand over two years. Can get a little, Jeff, can you give us a little uh insight into that?
Yeah. Let's see here.
So those are gangways uh in the seawall by the boat ramp. With that repair and replace. And then if we try to make all the gangways in the West Basin ADA, that's going to be a pretty large project, because there's probably going to have to be landings put in, and the gangway actually done in two parts. Because I can't push the docks out any further from the seawall because I'm already infringing on it on channel itself. So to get, you know, the the gangways to ADA, it may have to be uh a two, a two part gangway with a landing.
We have that. I can pull, I can pull that project sheet up. Um, let me just change uh let me just change items here. Um, one second. Um, that project sheet is on one forty one of the capital budget detail. And I'll find it in a second.
And that's also going to have to kind of be done in conjunction when they redo the seawall because the gangways are going to be mounted onto the seawall, you know, on the West Basin.
There it is up here now. Um, pipe, pipe, aisle replacement. This is the sheet. It's on the uh, it'll be on the screen in a second. Okay, this is it.
So that's, that's the one, in the picture, that's the one ADA gangway that we have in the, by the boat ramp.
You have two ADA gangways. One is the boat ramp and one is the um.
East Basin dock, D dock.
The the East Basin rim. Docks.
So to get the other docks that, you know, to conform to that ADA standard.
So an ADA gangway uh is, you know, is now in the range of uh, let's be generous and assume that inflation will continue uh would be forty thousand dollars each.
Right, right.
With all, with all the whistles and bows, bows.
Right, but that's for an eighty foot gangway. That, an eighty foot gangway would overhang the dock right now.
Only if you go, if if you, there are ways of doing it. You can put it on an angle. And uh, you know, th- there are ways of doing it. We're doing it all all over the country.
Right, but you're gonna, I I don't have a whole lot of slips to be putting the gang. I can't get to both sides of the dock if the gangway's coming down on an angle. This is something that Joe Russo had started, you know, for me. And they had, you know, platforms, you know, in the design. This way, we we would maximize the boat slips.
But what I think we have to look at is that, is that when um, before you, before you became the harbor master, uh, Jeff, Joe put in gang, got dock and gangway replacement, and we're using that number uh off of this project sheet. But since we're doing um docks in-house, re- repairing, replacing docks in-house, um, we may need to look at that number and revise that number.
Okay.
And and we can easily do that um in the next week or or two, um, not have too much trouble with that.
You know, i- if you want, Jeff, I'm happy to sit and and conceptually show you ways of doing it, uh, uh, you know, that might be uh equally more functional and less costly.
Okay, great.
Yep, so we'll take a look at, hold on, let me pull that that sheet back up again. What number was that? Fifty eight? Fifty eight. Dan, on the master spreadsheet, uh, we got to look at, we got to look at fifty eight and make sure that it's just well, you know what, Jeff, you're going to have to look at docks and gangways in the event that that um you're not, you're not working on the docks anymore or at least include the uh raw materials for the docks that you're working on in this number. So it'll, it should be titled docks and gangway replacement. Um, and then we'll refine these numbers right here, these three oh two, three oh two five every year. All right. More questions?
I I have, I have one. I'm actually also, we have a, uh, Glenn is here and his hand is up. I um, but I have a couple of questions. I, um, but I have a couple of questions.
Give us the number.
It's really, oh, it's Scott packs. I don't have the number.
Uh, we'll find it.
At the end of the, uh.
So.
Right here, it's the last item.
I thought last year we had a conversation about not putting it in the capital budget. Because it's a, it's a really an annual expense. Now, I guess Augie's saying, and it's under twenty thousand, under twenty. So I'm just, it's not, it seems to be something that's an operating expense.
You're, you're referring to Scott packs, the line one forty-eight?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, last year when you had a discussion about it, you were referring to the replacement of the bottles, the actual air canister. Um, this is the actual entire breathing apparatus. It's the, what we wear on our backs with the mask and, and everything.
So they last a lot longer.
They last, they last a long time. I would say the oldest ones that we're currently using have to be probably around twenty-five to thirty years old. And, um, the reason, the reason that we haven't replaced any in quite a few years. Is because the, the manufacturer changed the design. And it was actually hated throughout the country where it was being used. So we did not purchase any because they were redesigning what we currently have. So we've been waiting for the better design to come out, which they're projecting for the end of next year. Um, and at that point, pretty much everything we have will need to be replaced. Because the parts for what we currently have are not available.
But that's not an annual thing, so.
No, this is gonna be, this is gonna be, uh, pretty much a one-time expenditure.
One big lump sum.
General fund for Scott, uh, Scott bottles.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the bottle, the bottles themselves are the items that have that, uh, expiration date.
Yeah.
And have to be cycled through. The packs will last, the packs themselves will, will last as long as they're cared for.
Right.
Which is, which is what we have now and they've, they've, you know, proven the test of time.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the clarification.
But I need, I need, I have a question on this. So, so Chief Barney, there's fifty potentially that we're going to. Purchase end of next year at fifteen thousand each. I understand that, but that, that comes down to ten. Per firehouse, per company?
Yeah, I mean, o- on average, we have, on average, we have between six and ten on each piece of equipment.
Okay.
So that, that actually fifty would actually not move in completely outfits, believe it or not.
So, so we're gonna have to talk about that and, and make sure that we have the number. If we're gonna end up or, or we're somewhat forced to purchase the new better model all at once. We're gonna have to adjust that number so that the, uh, so it's, it's properly reflected in the capital budget.
No problem.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
Can we go back to your definition? If we are, if we are continuing buying. Things that have a five-year or less of a life every year. Why would we not put them in the operating expense as opposed to the capital expense? Because we're doing it every year.
We're doing it every year. It should be part of operating.
So you're not doing, you're not doing Scott pack harnesses?
No, no, I understand, but for instance, we do the police cars every year. We don't, we don't do the entire fleet. We, every, every year we do police cars, um, et cetera, you know. There was a time when we took all of those things out of the capital and put them into the operating budget.
Correct. But they just, for a little, uh, history on the police cars, there was, were in the operating budget. But with, uh, uh, when COVID hit, we removed it from the operating, put it in capital. Because we knew we were getting the grant for, uh, through Otis's office. That would allow us to purchase three police vehicles.
And, and I have no problems with that, Dan. And, you know, that and, you know, the paving where we get the chips money. I don't have, you know, if it's a wash item or a, you know, significant wash item, I don't have a problem with that.
I, 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 I'm not making a value, just saying that that was, that, there was a decision and we just haven't, uh. Uh, gone back to funding the police vehicles through the general fund budget.
Yeah, but, but, but I think we need to take a hard look at, we have license agreements in here. And license agreements we do every year. So I, I think what, what I'd like to do is, I mean, they're not large items, but there are items. And I think we need to take a look at those and determine whether, you know, what, if these are, you know, with something we're doing every year. You know, handle it in the operating and then, you know.
And I, I can understand that, that thought process and, and maybe, so I can tell you, of course, this year we're getting four new cars. Because we had four cars destroyed. Um, but, um, in future years. I, I think police cars should go back into operating. So we have a set number of police cars that we're replacing year after year after year. It just happened to be that, it just happened to be that we made that adjustment because of the grant, but also to help us with our COVID, to help us with our COVID budget. It really helped us significantly to pull, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget to be able to, um. Offset the, the revenue loss that we, that we anticipated. But, but now that revenues are coming back and we're increasing revenues, the cars could go back into operating. And we just, as a matter of, um, an annual, uh, purchase order, order three new ones every year. I don't think Chief DeRosa will mind that, but I can also defer to her and see what she says.
Have no issue with that.
Okay.
I think Chief wants the cars.
And I think so too. But yeah, that, that's, that's fine. That could be something, doesn't have to be in this year's budget, like I said, because we're getting four cars replaced. But, um, it could be.
We, we, we're getting insurance for, uh, on those, are we not?
We're getting insurance plus also whatever the insurance didn't cover. We talked to FEMA, I talked to FEMA this week about it and they're covering the balance of them.
Okay, so. So on the, on the capital items which you've identified, which are not on my blown-up list, um, which is fine. Um, you know, to the extent that we have. That they are being, how do I say it? Like self-funding, i.e. You know, the chips program, you know, the paving, you know, we're getting the money back on that, you know. I think we should break those out. So that even though they're in the capital. It's, they're basically wash items, i.e. we, there's a grant or some other information that is paying for it. So the way I would look at it is, I wouldn't have put that in the seven and a half percent type thing. Where I'm going?
I do.
A- and because it, it pays for itself, i.e., you know, whether. You may have a delay of a year, you may have a delay of two years, depending on how the things work. But it's basically a wash goes in, you know, we, it goes out one way and comes in on the other hand.
Uh huh, I get it. That's fine. And that could be part of the discussion that we have Monday night as far as the, the target, seven and a half percent policy.
Yeah, no, but so it, 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 it makes it a lot easier. And I think it's much easier for people to understand that are not delving through the weeds.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, conceptually, they can take a look at and say, okay, we understand that. It isn't as big a hit as we think it is.
But Lou, did you have items? Do you have?
There isn't, I'm sorry.
I thought Lou had some items that he wanted to talk about, but I'm sorry.
We covered it.
Okay, good.
I have one question along the same vein and it's, I guess it's for Augie. So number eight are the Microsoft three sixty-five licenses. It's, you know, it's twenty-three thousand dollars. It's not a lot of money. But the project score is only seventy-five. So it seems to be, we have to renew the licenses every year, right? Their, their annual licenses and it's got a low project score. So, you know, if we're really paying attention to the project score, we'd never get to something that was seventy-five. So I, that's, I mean, so what are, you know, how do we make sure that we don't, that we don't put stuff? I mean, it's over twenty, but it's something we spend every year. So how do we make sure? If we're really gonna prioritize according to project score, you know, I think it's really important to pay for these licenses.
Right, but the check valve that's in the system is nothing prevents us to go to the board and it be a resolution. And ask for the purchase of these items and explain why we need them.
Oh, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if we're really trying to get a handle on what, on what our capital budget is.
Yeah.
We would put that way at the bottom and, and it's something that we need to do. So that I'm, and I'm sure there are other things like that. That's, that's where I've got a little confusion with capital budget.
Yeah, so, so, so if I can explain the project score, y- you know, you're right, but, but, and the reason it's a seventy-five. Of course, you know that it doesn't, it doesn't impact, uh, uh, life safety. It doesn't impact, uh, legal, uh, consent decree. Which, which brings up the score higher and doesn't impact, um, some other items that, uh, you know, are, um. Like a DPW item has a, has a, a two to three hundred score because we utilize them in, uh. Um, snow removal and safety, you know, safety of the public. So, but you're right, it does throw that off. And, um, I think it's not necessarily a project score, although that's what we've decided to call it. It's, it's more of a, um, uh, I probably should use something like a, a public safety. Or a, a, an impact score, um, that, yes, if we have a lot, if we don't have the three sixty-five licenses. We, the people on this Zoom are significantly impacted, but I'm not sure if the public is impacted. Really in any way. So I think that project score may be getting more, uh, value. Uh, in, uh, than, more value than, than it is on these kinds of items. Or, or more consideration than on this kinds of items.
Jerry, Jerry, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe there, there should be an asterisk or something like that, but these are items that you simply have to pay. They're not optional, uh, they're, they're, they're not, they're, they're essential. Um, we, we used to call them, uh. In, in, in broadcasting must runs and the things that had to, had to go into the broadcast. So, um.
That's okay with me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you, 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 you put a little thing next to it, uh, that says, we, that's, you know, don't even think about messing with it. You gotta pay that.
No, let me ask you, you know, I understand that, but all the licenses are going to annual basis. Uh, and if we have to pay it every year, it should be in the operating and it's, and I agree, it's a must, it must be done. And that's an operating thing. It must happen. It's not a capital thing. And I think we need to take a hard look at that.
So we do a, we do an operating flush on the capital, on the capital list to see what should be in, in operating. And what can stay in capital line, in capital.
I, I know that we have numerous licenses and we used to be able to do a five-year, a two-year, a ten-year. We, we, we're lucky now if we get three sixty-five days.
And, and one of the things we, we have in, in the budget is the department head priority, which is not necessarily tied to the project score. So it's, it's an attempt to provide both a qualitative and quantitative, uh, assessment of these projects.
I, I understand and nobody's criticizing. We're just taking a look at where we wanna categorize things. I do have one major thing that is not on any of these lists that we are a DEC order on. Which is the dam.
Damn is not on this list, I don't think.
No, it's not.
We may have discussed it, Dan and I, the other Dan and I may have discussed it in the past. But, um, it's not on this list. You're right.
Yeah, but, and, and we need to, and, and what I'd like to suggest is. Uh, that we allocate, and it's the money for a engineering review. Um, because the, it, it, it's gonna be somewhere around a million and a half, maybe more. Whether we take it down or we replace it. But there are significant factors, adverse factors, either way. Um, uh, the Corps did some work on it when they were doing the, um, homework for the, um, Army Corps plan. Um, I don't know if anybody else does, but, uh, we really need some real hard advice. And I'm surprised that we, the, the EC has not come down hard on us, because they gave us a deadline of two years ago.
Yeah, they haven't even mentioned it, actually. I can tell you that.
Uh, I understand, but it, just because they have it doesn't mean it's gonna, not gonna come in, bite us in the.
So do you, do you want us to, do you want us potentially look at an engineering study to provide the Board of Trustees with? Um, as many options as possible? Do you wanna have options?
I'm not sure the options. What I want is, what are the consequence, what are the adverse consequences of taking it down?
Okay.
Because those are the only two options you have.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you know, playing game, I don't think because of the dam safety issue, unless you rebuild it. They're not gonna accept a patchwork. That's what we've been told, we were told long, long ago. Um, so we're, we're late, we're really left with two options. And there are significant issues attached to either each option.
Dan, Dan Sonoff, do you ever recall anyone looking at that? Any of our engineering firms or anybody prior engineer?
Um, I, I think in, we're getting into specifics, no.
Um, okay.
You know, the, I think there have been engineering analyses. Of what type of protection the dam affords. Uh, and I think it's found to be anywhere from a, a two to a five-year, uh, storm. Um, each, if you, uh, if you decommission the dam. Um, it's not like, uh, for lack of a term, it's not like, you know, some cartoonish attempt where you go out there with a, you know. TNT and, and blow it up. You have to, you, you lower the dam to, uh, you know, I think the level. That it currently provides on a, on a normal day. And I think you're also supposed to. If you do de-commission, you have to identify and implement capital projects to maintain those benefits. Uh, but I can certainly, uh, talk to some of the, uh, engineers that we've dealt with specifically as, as it relates to dams. Uh, and, uh, you know, ask them if they can, uh, uh, kinda give us that type of proposal.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, hold on a second. So, so can we, Dan, Dan Natchez, uh, Trusty Natchez. Can we have a discussion about what the scope would be so that we could push it out to some firms? To try to get some numbers back?
Sure, but in, in, in the interim, if Dan can contact the Corps to get their analysis of the dam.
Okay.
Uh, that they did and then they excluded it from the Army Corps, you know, project. Um, and there were reasons for doing that, uh, you know, so that's document, that's a document that exists that we can get and help. To, um, define the scope a little bit better is what I'm getting to.
Define the scope. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll look at the Corps, we'll look at the information from the Corps to help us find the scope. We'll add it to a work session and then have the discussion of the board at that work session, developing, uh, a scope. So that the staff has some direction of what you guys want us to, to push out and get some numbers on.
And, and allow me to, I mean, are, are, are you saying we're, we're two years past the deadline for, for removing the dam or?
We're, we're, we're well past, we're more, well more than two years since we were notified that the dam was, uh, structurally unsound.
That's great news.
Yeah, may I? Dan, when was the first time that we received notice that we had to do one or the other fix or remove? Because I think I have an idea, but I want you to throw it out.
Um, I, I can get the answer tomorrow. I'd have to go through the file. I think it was, uh, it's been several years.
How many years do you think, more or less? More than five?
Yes.
Uh, I, I don't know if it's more than five. I know, you know, the first time. Uh, they came to us, we had to do some analyses. But I think, you know, with the, the DEC, I, I think it's either, you know, four or five years that they said. You have to do, you either have to, uh, bring it up to like modern standards. Or you have to remove it. The last time I had, um, our engineer, uh, from, uh, called GHD. Look at it. I think it was, uh, approximately two point five million to kind of bring it up. To, uh, modern standards, uh, and two and a half million to remove it, uh, or decommission it. But I, I can, I can review the file tomorrow. It's just been a while since I've looked at it.
What do you remember? What do you remember as far as, uh, the timeline? When you first got on?
I remember when I first got on and, and, and that was like the second or third notice. Uh, by, 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 when I got on, almost six years ago. It was, it was, it was the same hammer. You have to do something. I think then we got it a couple of times.
Yeah, I think, I think the first notice was.
Uh, because it was always split on whether to do one or the other.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think we we need to do two things. I'll get into the weeds. And I'm not, I'm not against it. I think actually the suggestions from Mr. Natchez and you are perfect with Dan's history and is that we need to move this really into the capital project. Right. And and do a bulk of one or two so that you don't delay that.
All right.
Then it has to fold into our project, of course, including the Army Corps. The Army Corps doesn't pick one it. So but but it could be, it could be a matter of weeks or days when you get another letter. And that is a consent order. That actually raises the number one.
Right.
Number one. Actually, I think based on that criteria, it should be number one. But I want you to make that decision and it's gonna come to us and it's the overall piece of this um um, you know, flood uh mitigation.
Yes.
Strategy. It it it's about time. We
Yeah.
rather priorities and and the and and why I shouldn't say it that way. But the 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 point is we never got to it and it was around the same time that we were talking about river cleaning and the like. This is actually part of that. This is where the whole thing is. So we, I think it's about time and very timely that we picked this project up both in the capital.
That's great.
Capital plan in the budget because there may budget items and throw and build it in.
We will.
And that it's part of a work session. So by now, I I I fully second that this should be back on our, on our work agenda, uh work session, uh probably on an early, you know. With an urgency attached to it because you'll have, you'll come back to bite us. Very soon, it's better to do it ahead of time.
But we'll amend, we'll amend the capital budget to include uh an item for the dam based on uh the information that Sarnoff, Mr. Sarnoff will find for us as far as the numbers, the two million dollar range. Um we'll look up where we are as far as what the last um what the last information is that we had on it. And look, we're not shy on taking on, you know, big and possible jobs. So we'll, you know, in projects, we'll.
Much more than two.
Yeah.
It's much more than that. I think it was much higher.
Big numbers, big, big numbers.
That's one of the reasons why we didn't entertain it. It was significantly higher. I don't want to throw a number.
Okay.
Dan, because Dan, I wouldn't want to even argue with his memory. But but I my my figure in my head is, is that it's much, much more than that based on on the projects, what what it really meant. So I I have, I have a bigger number in my head.
Well, we'll add it to the bottom of the new, of the of the new item uh work session items um for the eleventh. You know, when we get to it, we get to it, but um we'll try to prepare ourselves for that discussion as best, as best we can and include whatever backup material we can find in our uh in our files and our, I know Richie has a lot of files that we can.
We do we need to vote on on putting that on, Jerry?
No.
It's up to, we don't need to, which as long as you guys agree, then we'll we'll put it on.
I just, I just sent an article from two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, seven years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We'll take, we'll take that on. We'll take that uh that on.
Well, that's.
Any more individuals?
All right, anything else?
I I do have a uh a way out question for the chief um and Jeff. Um uh both, Jeff, you're asking for a repowering of your boat and Chief, you're asking for a new police boat. Am I reading the capital budget correctly?
Over here, this is, this is police boat, four hundred and sixteen thousand. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, so last year we were unsuccessful with um getting awarded a grant funding for a new boat, which was going to be a seventy five percent, twenty five percent match from the village. We are applying for the grant this year. Um we did get some positive feedback that we were full hook in the running. They just ran out of funding. Um but with a lot of initiatives going on uh in the sound in New York and and things like that, it's looking good for us. So I wanted to include it in the budget anyway, expecting that that's how much a new boat could cost. Um but we're looking to only hopefully have to pay twenty five percent. But if we don't get a new boat, we would at least need to power up the new motors, right, Jeff?
Right. So if we didn't get the new boat, three, two, one would be due for the old three, two, due for engines.
That's this thirty four?
That's that thirty four. So that would be because they're just about past their service life. We'll get this summer out of them. But if we don't get the new boat, we'll, we will have to repower that boat.
Okay, so I'm, are we, if we don't get the new boat, we're getting two new engines or we're getting or I'm I'm confused a little bit, Jeff?
Two, three, three, two, one's a twin engine boat. So we would replace both of those engines.
Right.
And how how long would that be good for, Jeff?
Uh the service life on those engines is roughly two thousand hours. So that usually lasts us three to four years.
All right.
We buy ourselves, but but to clarify, on this four sixteen, if we get the seventy five percent right, so we're this four sixteen is not our twenty five percent share. This four sixteen is the total that the boat would cost.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
And and the engines are probably worth more than the boat.
Yeah, well, the the engines, if you get them under the state pricing, they're about fifteen to twenty, fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars a piece right now.
Oh, okay.
So that's where the thirty four comes in.
Do they always get replaced in pairs? I would assume that, right? They always get replaced in pairs?
Always get replaced in pairs. Yeah, they keep them as what they call sisters in the marine business. They're sister engines, so they stay together.
And if we do get a new boat, I believe, Jeff, the motors are included as part of that, right?
Right. So then that thirty four thousand for the repower of three, two, one would come out of the capital. For three years when the new boat will be due for its first repower.
And what do we, what do we do with three, two, one?
That's a patrol boat. That's the, that's the primary patrol boat for the marine unit.
If we get the new boat, what do we do with the old one?
I'll get auctioned off.
Okay.
Okay, anymore?
Yeah, I have another one if nobody else has.
And I think Glenn, I think Glenn might be in the waiting room, but I I have a different screen up, so I can't.
Well, let 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 Glenn go and then I'll go after him. I don't want.
All right. Mr. Timon, how are you? Glenn, are you there?
No, hold on again.
I don't see him there. No, he's not there. Kristen's there and that's, I think, Harbor Master Kristen. Maybe.
Yeah, it is.
I don't, I don't see Mr. Tippett there.
Okay.
Want me to put the screen back up?
Yeah, he he left, but left this his hand.
He's back. No, he's back now.
Okay, back, all right.
In the waiting room.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Hi, Glenn, how are you?
Uh I just want to go over um a bunch of uh the capital items. Um items that should be in the operating budget. If you start with the clerk treasurer, item number five, corporate monitors, item number six, router hardware, outer, item number seven. Uh network storage, item number eight. Micro uh Microsoft three sixty five license. In fact, that was paid in the operating budget last year. Uh it ended up being paid through, I think, communications in the operating budget. It was, it was moved out. Those five items, every one of them should be in the regular budget. Then if you go to page two, you have HVIC that is done every um that is done every single year. Uh that's number eighty six. HVIC service, forty thousand dollars is done every single year. Then you have under the police.
Now, hold on, hold on, in the HVAC, hold on on that.
Yeah, that's not for service. That's to kind of be on a standard basis of replacing one to two units of our very, at our various buildings throughout uh each year. So we're on a.
But that would be like, that would be like replacing the police cars every year. We're spending forty thousand every year. Whether it's the same unit or we're just getting a different unit, we just rotate and spend the same amount every single year.
Potentially, right? Potentially, but it it is an item that can be in the capital, uh in the capital, on the capital plan because it is equipment and that equipment would last us, you know, a significant number of years. We're not replacing HVAC units, you know, every three, four years. We're replacing them ten, fifteen years, so.
Well, I do, I just want to point out.
Sure, that's fine. I understand what you're saying. I just wanted to discuss it further. Go ahead.
No problem. Then you have Motorola radios, item one twenty one. Then you have Axon Taser um one twenty two. Then you have what? LPRs one twenty three. That's all police equipment that's done every single year. And then you um, you have LED lighting conversion, but you know, that could be like the um, that could be like the um things. But then you have twenty sets of turnout gear every year for the fire department. Uh that's one forty seven. And then you have the bailout system, which is one forty six. And even last year, when discussing the budget in July, the mayor uh mentioned that these are items that are just perennial items. The fire department, police department need these items every year. And they might be better off in the operating budget. And it was too late last year and he said that we should review them this year. So tho- those are the uh the temporary items. My my overall look at the capital budget is that I think that we need to come up with a number of what we want to spend on 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 cap, on on the capital budget to actually start to move these projects forwards. Whether we need to spend five million dollars a year, six million dollars a year. Realistically, whatever we need, we have to start with, we need at least six million dollars a year. We can't spend two million dollars a year. We're never gonna catch up. We we spend al- almost a million and a half just trying to maintain our truck fleet. Then you throw in a fire engine, boom, you're done for the year. We real, have to come up with a realistic number, whether it's five or six million dollars. This is what we need to spend on our capital projects. We then do, then we have to figure out how do we want to generate the money? How much do we want to borrow and how much do we need to generate in-house? And then I think we should have a um, a secondary list that if the budget comes in well and we we are adding to our um unfunded balance that the the additional money in the unfunded balance can be used for the priority list of the additional projects if something else hasn't come in it, come in.
We talked about it very early in this, in this meeting. Um it was when I think trustee Tofor and I were talking or he was talking about, I had mentioned something like a budget guidance document where which can be changed every year, but it has some percentages, it has some uh big numbers, you know. Other than the the Board of Trustees, you're not gonna get any argument from staff about spending six million dollars a year on on capital items. There's no way. So
I I I.
So it's gotta be a policy. It's gotta be a policy that that's created by the board to, for their comfort level so that they move, so we can move forward with their um, with their wishes and and their uh objectives in mind.
We'll, we'll talk, we'll talk about that. Thank you.
Okay, um I have two things, if like, if nobody else has anything.
Sure.
Under here parking lot, we're replacing that. Jerry, is that what this is?
Yeah, let me, let me pull it up. I can't remember which one it is.
That that's number ninety five.
Ninety five. Ninety five's a repair in the first year and then a replacement in the second year. Buys a year, it buys us a year. That's, that's the way we looked at that. And that's got a high priority because we have a letter from the county or the state. I can't remember, but I'll pull it up. So so it's a, it's a two million dollar potential um replacement structure. And we have, we have estimates of around three hundred thousand, you know, two seventy for the repairs that are needed now.
The repairs are, the repairs are the stairs or the deck or what?
Um it's, it's the railings, it's the um spalding from the uh concrete, it's things of that nature. And they called it spalding. I don't know what, you know.
That that's the underside falling down on Corps.
Right. So that kind of stuff being addressed could buy us a little bit of time. But when I did this and I did this, this uh, this list, I just wanted to add the two million to demonstrate that that's what it would cost, a million dollars per deck to get that thing replaced.
And the, so the, the money we would spend repairing it really is gonna be lost by the time we have to really rebuild it.
It buys us some time, that's all.
It's all it does, it's.
Right, just buys us time, yeah. And I think what we move, what we've done is I think this two sixty nine may have been in two, two capital budgets ago, two years ago. And then we had the two million three years down the road. And now because we haven't, you know, because we're compressing everything or moving, moving, you know, twenty twenty into twenty twenty one into twenty twenty two, it's kind of compressed.
The other question I had is on the annual paving.
Sure.
We we, we're still waiting, I guess, for your, the priority list that staff was going to create.
We're working on it. We're working on it. We uh, we just received the the timing of the sewer pipe replacement on the roads that we're going to be doing. And then I had to wait for the draft of the next three areas of the meter um of meter seven, nine and ten to see if there were any full cut replacements there. I'm looking at that now. It's two hundred plus pages. So if I identify items in that project, the full cut repair uh in the next sewer remediation phase, then I of course have to take those streets off that list because I can't, you know. I can't, I can't be that guy who paves the street and then gets it ripped up the next year to replace a pipe. So I'm just, it's a little, it's right, I'm right there at that, at that moment where I'll finally get all the information to develop that list. That's the holdup on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Good, we're almost at our time.
Yeah.
It's a good meeting.
I'm sorry.
Good.
The Southbury Avenue pipe assessment replacement. This is the one by the Otter Creek Bridge? I mean, Guyan Creek Bridge?
The siphon? I think it's the one, it's the one up further, closer towards uh post road. Let me see. What number is it again?
Um it's somewhere around forty something, forty four, forty, forty five.
It's our engineer, right? This is Southbury Siphon Pipe. Chief Barney, this is, this is our, this is the one here, yeah?
That's, that's the, that's the sewer siphon um down on uh Guyan Drive in Southbury. That is completely, it's, it's completely uh seized the valves. So it's, it's in the open position. Um and they're, they're gonna be that way until they get replaced.
We, we end up, we end up getting called out to pump, to pump out the the um
The basin.
The basin all the time there. Then the other one, the other, the other siphon that we have in, we have an actual emergency on is the one on uh on Mamaroneck Avenue at DS, you know, in the worst possible spot ever. That's where we have a problem. So we're still actively trying to negotiate with the county on how we can get that how we can get that done because they're giving us some trouble about traffic control and those kinds of things right now.
Hey, Jerry? I see you've got uh on fifty, forty five and fifty seven seem to be, you know, obviously related. Are those at the same project?
Forty five and fifty seven?
Yeah.
No. No, I think, I think the uh, I think the chamber reconstruction is, I think, different than, I'm not sure why her nanny had it separate, but I think you may have explained it, that the chamber reconstruction would have been different than the actual uh issue that Chief Barney just explained about the pipe.
I think, I think what Pastor Young is uh bringing up is, would it be more economic to do both at one time?
Potentially, yeah, I think you're right. It would be. Yes, it would be.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the, the chamber itself has cracks in it. So when the siphon does fail and it does back up, it was, it was leaching. So I think it was split into two projects to s- to assess which was, could be done faster and mitigate the other. But if the money's gonna be spent, it's probably best to just do it as one large scale project. Is there one part of it that can be put off? I mean, is the, is the uh, is the chamber reconstruction something we can live without for a while or is that?
Yeah, if you fix the leaking, if you fix the leaking in the chamber, then you don't have to worry about the leaching of the chamber. But at some point, you're gonna have to replace the chamber. I mean, I can't tell you how old this equipment is, but I've looked at it and I've been there. But at some point, you're gonna have to replace the chamber. I mean, I can't tell you how old this equipment is, but I've looked at it and I've been there. You know, it's got some, it's got some years on it. That's for sure.
I have one last question. Tompkins Avenue Bridge. I know that we haven't even begun to. Really dig into it. Are there any bridge New York grants?
Well, so we have a, we, Dan will give you a little update because we were talking about that this week about Tompkins. And we talked about it with FEMA as well, Nora. Dan, you still around? Did we lose Dan?
No, I'm sorry. So with the Bridge New York program, it's not gonna open up again till next year. And even still, as, as a point of comparison. We received our Bridge New York grant for Hillside Avenue Bridge in 2017. We got a shovel into the ground in 2021. I think the town of Mamaroneck is gonna be slightly faster in that it's only gonna take them about three and a half years to get from their award to Waverly Avenue. What we've done with Tompkins Avenue Bridge, we've spoken with FEMA about it. What FEMA has asked us to provide is a. Dual scope of services as to what would be. Needed for either the, the as-built replacement or a, a new replacement that would. You know, really complement and enhance the benefits of an Army Corps project. So I have asked our engineers from HVEA to prepare. A quote to prepare those scopes of services. They submitted that to us last week. I had Jerry sign that last week. And we are soon to begin that work to get those scopes of services for FEMA so they can help us. You know, hopefully get to a point where we're replacing it, not in its current condition, but in a, a better condition.
We have it on the FEMA, on the FEMA list at, at an approximate $5 million replacement. They're aware of it. They just want, because it's a big number and it's a big item, they want updates from, from us. Every couple of weeks when we talk to them.
Want to do an as, you know, a, a like to like replacement because. You know, we have an Army Corps project. We wanna make sure that. And the Army Corps has told us that if we replace the bridge, it should be done to complement their project with their, with it in mind.
That's right.
To that end, we're gonna have to record that bridge sooner or later, no matter what happens.
I, I know. We, we spoke about this, you know, the, it's a little bit different for, of a process because it's. I think it's EHP as opposed to. The New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Story Preservation. But I can't imagine they'd ask us to do anything different. Already done. So.
You know how to do that, Dan.
All right. So that's what, that's what that is on there. From FEMA.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
Before you, but do, I just wanna thank staff for staying.
I agree with that. Thank you.
I'll make the motion. And I, I also just wanna thank staff because three years ago today, we did not have the beginnings. Of a five-year capital plan. So, you know.
You did a great job. Very work hard.
Huge undertaking. So thank you, everyone.
That's nice. How lovely.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye bye, see you tomorrow.